The next item on the agenda is going to be public comments. At our last meeting, we had some disruptions occur at our last meeting. If that happens again, I'm going to ask, there's a public comment policy that's in the back. And if, but if that happens again, I'll ask the person to stop. If they don't, and this person didn't, then I will call for a break. And I will keep, we'll have a break until things calm down. If the speaker or the audience member stays disruptive, I will also ask the staff to call for outside assistance. So we're hoping that this can be, you know, a calmer meeting. And we had a list, and so the first person on our list to speak, and everybody speaks for three minutes. It's nice to know your name and your community. And yeah, it's in, and it's, okay. So the first person, and I am not sure, is it, is it Hayden? Why, from example? Oh, and we even have a timer here, so this person.
So I just wanted to first say that I have actually put this package together about some of these books that are in our local libraries. I actually have three of them that I have actually kept up myself. Perks of Being a Wildflower, Let's Talk About It, The Teen's Guide, The Teen's Guide to Sexual Relationships and Being a Human, Fun Home, and a Fun Home, A Family Type of Magic Comic. First book I want to talk about today is Let's Talk About It. We have some books in here in our own local libraries. First one, this is in the young adult section, so this is anywhere from 12 to 21 year olds. We have books talking about not only sexting, we have books about how to have sex. I mean, it goes even how to use butt plugs. And eat ass. Second book I want to talk about today is Perks of Being a Wildflower. I myself couldn't even read the third page of this book. First two pages is talking about how to have sex and sitting in a cafeteria lunchroom, listening to how their own fellow student committed suicide. Why in the world are we promoting this to kids? You know, I attended Lake City High School, and I had to sit in my cafeteria lunchroom, and you have one of my fellow students was found in a garage. The fact that we're promoting this to kids makes me want to vomit. When these are out of our Hayden libraries, Little Main libraries, this is disgusting. Absolutely disgusting. Anyone wants to see any of the proof of anything else, please come see me after I leave.
Thank you. All right, cool. On is Mike Burton.
Well, thanks very much. I appreciate you giving the opportunity to speak. First off, has any of these folks in here, have any of you ever assisted and taken a child to court that's been sexually abused or harmed in any way? No, I have. Has any of you ever went out and searched for a body of a sexually abused child that was murdered in the most heinous ways? All of y'all? Probably not. I have. Some of the material in here, and what Vera actually alluded to, is we have this information in here. There's QR codes, there's links to go there. We're not into censorship in any way, shape, or form. But there is a reason why we as responsible adults are in a position, it's our responsibility to make sure that kids, oh, I'm five years old, I'm going to do methamphetamine and go drive a car. There's a reason why we put child food blocks on cabinets so they don't drink bleach and/or deep lie. There's a reason why we do this. We're all responsible. You're either part of the problem, or you're solution, you're part of the problem. I, I challenge anybody, you know, to come up, and we look at the materials that are in us. And if you feel that this is acceptable for children, you need to seek help immediately. But with that being said, there, we need to make libraries and places like that a safe place. Remember when they're tax funded? What we would like to see is let's, let's put a panel together, let's go over some of these materials, these books that are right here. Now, they're all in condensed form right here. We don't ask you to take our word for it. Please, get the QR code, go to the link, read this material, make up your own minds if you feel that this might be harmful to, with your children. Okay, but like I said, you're either part of the solution, you're part of the problem. Any one of you that would look at this material that is in this, who would say this is okay? For your children or anybody else, you know what? My child is dead. I don't have a child anymore, but I'll be damned if I will let anybody shove their shit on tits around here. It's not gonna happen. I have three minutes.
Thank you. E.W.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra White. I'm with the Hayden City Council. And I just want to thank you all for serving our communities in the way you do. I am also opposed to books that promote sexuality for children. But I want to look at it in a different way. I want to look at a library like a smorgasbord. A smorgasbord is something we don't see a lot anymore, but we used to see them more often. You could go in and there's a huge variety of foods, and there's flavors and tastes. You go to the, you send your kids, they get the mac and cheese. The mac and cheese would be like the kids' section for the books. The adults would go for the steak. I think that would be like the research section. Some people go for the novels, a little steak. That's like the dessert. Some, maybe some smorgasbords serve alcohol, but that's quite an compliment. But, but the fact is, there's something for everybody. But one important thing about a smorgasbord is the food is not fresh. And if it isn't tasty, then they're going to lose business, and it's just not good. So if food's not fresh, you're going to get food poisoning, and that happened to me once, and it was not pleasant. And if the food is not tasty, I mean, when I'm thinking of tasty, I'm thinking of things that are good. You know, these books influence children for the rest of their lives. They recall what they've read. These books shape them and form their character. So I'm just asking that we serve up the best and the tastiest food or books that we can. Think of a library as a smorgasbord. Something for everybody, and yet always fresh and always wholesome. And and I would like to think of a library having an A card, like a good restaurant has an A card. And the A stands for all things good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric, Eric Clary.
Okay. So having been involved with these board meetings for some time now, I've concluded there are two main competing narratives. I'm going to oversimplify here, but one side says, hey, protect children. And the other side says, don't hate people. So I asked myself, is it hating people to request certain sexual concepts not be introduced to children until later? I don't think so, but I'm of the belief that these things are a choice one makes, not the way you are born. So maybe that's the crux of this community disagreement. But I'll set that argument aside for a moment. Let's consider a different question. Is exposure to overt sexual content at a young age healthy? Is it allowing for the development of a sound mind and the blessing of a long life? Your current children's collection not only includes the introduction of, but now the well-documented exposure to overt sexual literature. As far as I can tell, the majority of this board and director agree it's just fine per the esteemed library policy. But by the same logic, if I request a book purchase of the most horrific barbaric thing I can think of, and it's in cartoon format, so it appeals to children, do you fulfill it because I say my child needs to see themselves represented in a story? Do we allow books into the children's library on how to kill kittens? Or why smoking is good for kindergarteners? Of course not. So why would we allow other harmful material in? Without one child who supposedly needs that book to feel good about themselves, which I would argue is they're not going to, you now have exposed 99 other children to content that in any other arena besides a library or a museum would be considered content harmful to minors. I know you will say the library does not have pornography in the children's section. Good, I hope not, but it's absolutely more than that. I'm not promoting censorship, or intimidation, or hate speech. In fact, this isn't even, and I'm better than you speech. Concerned citizens such as myself want book boundaries. I don't hate people who think opposite to me, but I do hate when evil is perpetrated on the most vulnerable among us children. I'm not going to bend my knee to these counterfeit narratives that promote a fake compassion and a messed up definition of love. We have a responsibility to the generation ahead of us to protect them and to speak real truth.
Good afternoon. My pronouns are she spelled Xi, as in Xi Jinping, and her as in Hercules, fifth labor. According to Amy Rhoda, the apparent CLN spokesperson with a vagina, phraseology from the August Medical Journal, The Lancet, in the July 29th edition of the CBA Press regarding objections to children's books, quote, "We've had a few concerns from a very small group." So let's look at some examples of what a few concerns from very small groups can achieve. O.G. Simpson's dream team of attorneys saved him from what would have been a wrongful double murder verdict. Three self-described Marxists founded Black Lives Matter, which urged on fiery but mostly peaceful protests, causing over a billion dollars in property damage and multiple deaths in 2020. Seattle and Portland mayors policies fostered 2020 Summer of Love in the long-lasting social justice utopia of CHAZ. The defund the police exhortations of the Squad contributed to a nearly 30% increase in 2020's murders compared to 2019, the largest single-year increase ever reported in the U.S. per the FBI. New York Stonewall riots ushered a glorious decades of gay pride and culminated recently in the June 11th celebration that will never be forgotten. A stalwart cadre Facebook fact-checkers thankfully spare all of us from the cacophony of ultra-maga cretins. Bill and Hillary Clinton and their foundation changed the lives of thousands of Haitian orphans. The Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation saved the lives of billions of people around the world with their multiple miraculous vaccines. George Soros and the Open Society Foundation are making the world a much better place through his innumerable philanthropic endeavors. One year ago, Joe Biden and his woke generals saved the Afghan citizens by reuniting them with their Taliban friends. And only 13 U.S. soldiers were killed that day.
Yeah, the policy says that the speaker may address the library really.
Right, I'm getting there, Katie.
Okay.
No worries. Climate guru John Kerry and AOC's profound leadership have convinced the generations to think twice before burdening the world with more children. Let's not forget our knight in the white lab coat, the man who is science, the diminutive but mighty bizarre, and his scarf adorned cohort and singing NIH director who saved our country well except for the 1.4 million adverse events, including 30,000 deaths reported in bears following the shots. And lastly, a February 16, 2022 email from Amy Rhoda to HREI's Jeanette Laster, giving Jeanette's a head up, heads up regarding the challenge library books and process, which prompted an overflow turnout of Rainbow Advocates at the next CLN board meeting. So actually, a few concerns from a very small group, they make a difference. And that, it won't be long until we see what a few concerns from this very small group of alarmed citizens can achieve.
Justin O'Connell.
Hello, my name is Justin O'Connell. I live in CBA. I also work with Central Planning. I also sit on the committee. I mean, Publishers Board, it's with the hobby of mine. Anyway, we're working, we had a round table group who was working on some of these, these issues. And we actually crafted a book on ourselves, and we wanted to see if you would consider putting it in the library here. So it's called Timmy. He had a mommy and daddy. Timmy learned at school dog whistles for white supremacy, like the Constitution, Bill of Rights, and Declaration of Independence. One day, he heard daddy mention the First Amendment. Timmy was concerned but did the same. But then, one day daddy mentioned the Second Amendment. Timmy had had enough. He didn't want what had to be done. Daddy had gone too far right. Timmy told his teacher, and what his daddy had said. That night, Timmy's daddy was disappeared. Timmy missed daddy, but the teacher said it was for the greatest good and gave him a lollipop. Timmy's mommy was traumatized. She began to work for the party. One day, mommy uttered, the party should do more for the workers. Timmy did what had to be done. Mommy had gone too far left. That night, mommy disappeared. Timmy went to live with foster care before getting a job with Central Planning. One day, Timmy's child, Timmy Jr., overheard his daddy wondering, turning in his mommy and daddy was the right thing to do. That night, Timmy disappeared. So, I mean, is this something you'd be considering and you're putting in the library? If there's two purposes. One, I think it's great for the kids. Two, I think it's also a blueprint of what we can do if people come in here and keep complaining about only books all the time that are all sitting right here. And then another thing on all the books that they're talking about, can I check those out? Usually I get those at the adult store, but on here, maybe I just check them out now. The guys in IAS Center Planning are kind of interested in this thing.
Mark Hales Smith. To the library to choose books, I'm careful about what I check out. I'm looking for books that are fun to read, but also books that are positive and encouraging. I understand that there are many books in this library in the children's and teens section that are inappropriate for me to read. For example, one day while looking in the picture book section, I came across a book called The Hips on the Drag Queen Go Swish, Swish, Swish. The first page shows a man dressed up in woman's underwear. I am so disgusted. These books have an adult, have adult content and that are randomly placed on the shelves. That, that makes me uncomfortable and more difficult for me to find books. Please consider putting these books into a label section so that it is easier for kids like me to find books that we are interested in. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hayden City Council meeting, Mayor Hammond opened by quoting the most well-read book of all time. I was duly impressed by his reading and application of the Holy Bible. And so I am going to similarly offer a selection, but from the Book of Romans and the New Testament. For although they knew God, they neither glorified him as God nor gave thanks to him, but their thinking became futile and their foolish hearts were darkened. Although they claimed to be wise, they became fools. Therefore, God gave them over in sinful desires of their hearts to sexual impurity. That many special interest groups fund our libraries. Even federal dollars, if accepted, have strings attached. What this community needs are people of integrity and truth to reside on this library board. Some of you consistently and faithfully stand up for the protection and rights of children. You know who you are, and I commend you. Others, though, are more interested in increasing library funding. Elections are coming, and you can be sure that voters are following this CIN library board and their actions.
Ralph Shay.
Thank you for your welcome to speak. My name is Ralph Shay. I'm from Cora. Several diverse opinions here today. My most important reason for being here is to support this board and what they do. And it's very important that the library system remains open to all individuals of all philosophies and with all rights returned. Thank you.
Thank you. So that is all the people we have now on our list to speak. We're going to move into our regular board meeting. Everybody's welcome to stay. But public comment is closed. So the next item on our agenda, person's down to Oh, are there agendas at the back of the room? Yes, I'm on our agenda, is we will be hearing our annual report from our new manager at Hayden, Roxanne Callenborn. That's not me, sorry. They run right at us. I'm the tech guy. I'd like to hear from him. I'm Roxanne. Thank you. In a moment. Seems like that's the one.
All right.
Let's look at this clicker here, too. Off, stop. I love it when it works the first time.
Yeah, those are boilers. Right. Oh, great.
I'm trying to wait just a minute.
Do you go right ahead?
I think it's okay. Let's introduce ourselves as, okay, yeah, that, yeah, I'm very sorry. Can we start with Vanessa Robinson?
I'm Regina McFree.
Rochelle Anderson.
Judy Meyer.
Katie Blaine.
Michelle D.
No. Understood. All right, then. Well, first off, thank you so much for having me here. Go ahead and introduce myself. I'm Roxanne Callenborn, and I am the community librarian and manager here at Hayden Library. Since I am relatively new in my role here, I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself and introduce my wonderful team that I work with. All right, my origin story. I'm originally from Rochester, Minnesota. You might know Minnesota. It is known as the land of 10,000 lakes and 100 million mosquitoes. That's a low estimate. I have a bachelor's in history from the University of Minnesota in a background working in history museums. I earned my master's of library and information studies from the University of British Columbia in Vancouver. I moved here three years ago with my husband for his new job. I started the Post Falls Library in August 2019, and I became manager here at Hayden just on January 31st of this year. So I'm loving my new position, and I'm excited to introduce you to the circulation team. Okay, first we start with our department leads. These are the other two full-time staff members we have. So we have Chelsea Summerlin and Katie Spelling. Chelsea is our lead circulation supervisor, and Katie is our full-time circulation supervisor, and she's also head of our adult programming team. The rest of our team of circulation supervisors includes David Beal, Denise Willbanks, and Krista Williamson. And we have a lot of circulation specialists. So we have John Smith, Betsy Davis, Diana Johandes, Tristan Pritchett, Tracy Grant, Tara Platts, Dave Snow, Savina Darzens, Diana Bird, and Avalon Robinson. We have our circulation assistants. If you ever see the stacks looking beautiful and neat, it's probably because they had just been there. This is Rhonda Hunter, Garth Lyberg, and Cindy Robinson. And then we have sort of two high-grade positions. So we have here Janay Friesen, and she is half circulation specialist and half adult programmer. So she splits her time between the two duties. We then have Crystal DeSalle, and she recently expanded her role as a circulation specialist into our IT specialist as well. So anytime anything breaks, or maybe a manager needs to do a test run of this, she is the person to go to, and I'm so happy she has been brought on. Get down to the numbers. So between July 2021 and July 2022, here at Hayden, we had 124 public meetings here. And so those are not just, those are mediums outside of what we put on as a library. And within those meetings, we had 786 meeting room users. Right now, of the CLN network, we have 13,811 cardholders who call Hayden their home library. And if our clicker out there is correct, our door counter, we have 121,997 yearly headcount coming from that door counter. I'm going to add some padding on that because I've seen quite a few kiddos who just love to see that clicker go back. If they run back and forth through the doors. So let's take off. All right, so like I said, I've not been here for a very long time. I've only been here about six months. I started January 31st. And there were big changes before I got here. So there were some big hires and promotions. So Chelsea got promoted to lead supervisor, Katie got promoted to full-time supervisor. And then, get this, we hired this whole list of people, Krista, Crystal, Avalon, Savina, Tara, Tracy, all in that six-month period. And then I took over for the previous manager, Jessica Bowman, when she left in October. And I really want to give a big kudos to Chelsea for holding down the fort when we were in between managers here. So it sounds like she did a wonderful job, and she could definitely be recognized for that. And moving on to our in-person programming, it restarted here in late 2021. And as well as providing grab-and-go props, we also were able to acquire some new lounge furniture that I'll show you on the tour. So there's some beautiful chairs by the fireplace and in the adult section. Over how we here at Hayden strive to fulfill the mission of the strategic plan. So of course, we are championing literacy and lifelong learning. And in focus area A, we are building literate and informed communities. So it's important to our team that we create space for everyone in the community to become lifelong learners. This extends to far beyond our bookshelves. We also have jigsaw puzzles, board games for all ages, and the Library of Things. This is a collaborative effort within the district to create, to create access to items that people might want to try, but wouldn't necessarily maybe have the funds or wanting to go ahead and buy it. So you can try everything now from a ukulele to a Prickett printing machine, to cookie cutters. And I would really encourage you to check them out. We also have, of course, as I mentioned, an awesome adult programming team, and they have multiple programs going on throughout the week. And we're not shy about advertising through them. We just want to shout it from the mountaintop what we have going on here. Also find throughout the library, thoughtfully crafted curated displays. Each display idea is designed by Hirdens, a Hayden cert member who specializes in readers advisory. And we also do have the podcast, the book, Isn't Necessarily Buttered. We started this during the pandemic over at Post Falls. It was the host for me and Michaela Tunsfeld. We did move over here to Hayden, where we wrapped up 41 episodes. When she was working here, she's now moved on. When she was working here, she's now moved on. And one of our last episodes featured Hayden staff member Avalon Robinson. And you can find all episodes on our website or anywhere fine podcasts are found. Shameless plug over. All right, moving on to our focus area B, creating connected communities. So where would we be without our community partnerships? To give you just a sampling of our involvement beyond our staff here, in May, we had the Cuteness Humane Society here for an adoption event during our Readathon where we got to eat dog waffles and some really adorable kittens. We're now partnering with, partnering with the Literacy Project of North Idaho to start an ESL program. And based on the demographics of our area, we've translated our flyers into Spanish, Russian, Ukrainian, Serbian, Bosnian, and Pashto, which is a language commonly spoken in Afghanistan. Outside in our parking lot, we have curative testing here and they are here every single weekday and it's completely free to anyone who would like to get tested. We also have lunchtime learning with our partners like Humana on various topics like stretching your grocery dollars or what happy people do in their daily life. Now, just a quick highlight on one of our focus area Bs, because this just makes my heart smile. The Crochet Connection is a group that comes in here every week and they have made literally hundreds of these cute bookworms, so they call. And two of our brilliant staff members, Avalon and Betsy, went ahead, gave them googly eyes and printed out these little slips of paper and they hide them throughout the library for anyone to find. And when they find them, it says you found the bookworm. We hope that that's our way of making the library a really special place to come. So I do encourage you after the board meeting to maybe look around or next time you're in our stacks to see if you can find one or two of them. Okay, focus area C, providing operational excellence. So we're always looking for new staff development opportunities, whether it's taking webinars or additional courses online. Chelsea and I from the Hayden circulation department, we're lucky enough to join our colleagues at the Public Library Association in Portland this year in March. We've got a lot of great ideas for reaching out to our community. And I'd also like to highlight the picnic table that we bought this summer with a generous grant from the Library Foundation. We picked out an ATA accessible table so that everyone can enjoy a lovely wine with the lions out there. And lastly, operational excellence is something we strive for here at the library through our dedication to excellent customer service. It's important that everyone who walks through our doors feels welcomed. Focus area D, providing accessible, inviting, safe and welcoming places to think, meet, work, and create. Some examples of this are, for example, our craft union group, it's a group of members who come and they work on whatever crafts they're doing at the moment. And we were so proud when one of the members showed us the notes that she had repeated during her time here and we just had to get documentation of it. We've also gotten some new displays from the Spokane Public Library, the branch that was closing down. It's these ones right here, we gave them a little elbow grease shine and we've been merchandising them to look like a bookstore. We think that putting our new books there, our new materials, makes it a really fun experience for our members who come in. So those, along with our board games and our video games, all of our sort of exciting new extra material, we put in one place so that when families come in, they can all find something that they want to do together. So there's a lot of family-friendly games. And it's right when you walk in. And then, of course, we do a lot of passive programming. If you're not familiar with that, passive programming is something that can just sort of be out, like handouts. Or, for example, we have, you can see in the back, our community jigsaw puzzle that we have some really dedicated members who come in at least a few times a week to work on and we would like to change that, so it's fun to work on it all together as a community. What's going on here at Hayden? Thank you for this opportunity to present to you all and I would love to hear any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Okay, questions? Got it, sorry. I have a question, just because I'm not sure what curative testing is in the parking lot, what is that? Okay, so it's a third-party company and they just have contract to be in our parking lot and do COVID testing. I have a question and then a comment. My question was, because I think I missed it, what, you told us about your upper-level education, what library degree do you hold? Oh, sure, so because I went to a Canadian school. In the US, it's more common for it to be library and information science down here, but the degree I got was library information studies, but they're both ALA accredited and pretty much exactly the same thing. Gotcha, okay, thank you for explaining that. And then I, my comment is that I wanted you to know that we, at least I can only speak for myself, diligently read the board reports every month, so thank you so much for the effort you put in to report to us what's happening in your library. I appreciate that.
Question about some of the jargon, the EFL, which is English as a second language. How do you choose which languages to reach out to? I know you mentioned this, Spanish, my Spanish language. But I was interested in some of the other languages that you identified are needed here.
Yeah, absolutely, so we have a really talented staff member, our 18 specialist, Chris Bell. She happens to know, I think, five languages. So I knew that she spoke Russian and then she said, by the way, I speak these other languages as well. She actually looked at the demographics of incoming newcomers to our community and both here and Spokane. And so she picked about the top five and then both her own knowledge and using online resources translated them into those top languages.
Yeah, I think that's another part of library service into all of folks. Many times also we do classes in various languages, so it's fun to see that we're seeing, thank you.
I agree, thank you. Michelle?
Well, not, not a question, just a comment. I'm having a little war with myself here because my home library is Post Falls. And I'm a little sad now that you're here. But clearly you're doing awesome stuff here and your board reports are always lots of fun to read, so thank you for the effort you put into them.
Thank you so much.
Okay, my rebuttal, I'm so glad she's here. But I would like to say, I'm speaking from my, I'm glad, I'm very happy that we have a manager here. But speaking from my home library experience, I came in the other day. So this has been my home library for lots and lots and lots of years.
Since the last century.
Yeah. She's, her too. And I have, I came in one afternoon and there were no programs, there was nothing going on. It was the busiest I've ever seen this library. I couldn't believe it because this tends to be more what I call a commuter library. You know, we run it and grab our holds, I mean, yeah, that's what you let us do now. And I was, I was astounded and that's happened a couple of times since then and it's breathtaking. The other thing is I cannot tell you how excited I got with the new bookshelves. I just hated them when they were right, when the new books were right. I love where the holds are, but I just, you know, so the new ones, it's just wonderful, it's really nice. And it just feels like, and I know there was a space there where everybody was holding it together, but it feels very lively since she's been here, I thank you.
Thank you, that's really nice.
That's it, all right, well, thank you very much, Roxanne.
All right, I'll check in with you guys, it's about a year from now.
Okay, then next item on the initiative, Nick Matson, our emerging technologies librarian.
That is me.
Are you emerging?
Yes, indeed, I'm emerging from the shadows to give a presentation. You can? Boom, yes, it worked. All of them. Now, I believe that we've all met before, Nick Matson, emerging technology librarian. I've been in this position since 2019, actually, no, it was 20, it was the end of 2018. So it's been a little while. But this is something that I haven't been able to do the last couple of times and that's introduce you to another staff person. So instead of the emerging technology department being a department of one, sending an office, machinations and all the things, now we also have Chris Thielen as a member of the emerging technology department. So Chris Thielen is our emerging technology and outreach specialist. Chris had his master's in library science from Emporius Saints. He was a supervisor here at the Hayden Library. We offered him position in November of 2021 and he was, he had a couple of hours with us and still a couple of hours at the front desk because they were in a time of transition as well. Chris started working for us full-time in February of 2022 of this year. He splits his time, half of his time is with me in emerging technology and half of his time is with the bookmobile department as well. So he has his commercial driver's license, he's able to drive the bookmobile as well as the discovery bus. He's been busy doing programs, busy helping me plan some things out, busy getting top-up bookmobile and a whole bunch of other missions together with the team over in bookmobile. So Chris has been busy all over the place. Right now, he's actually down in Boise, participating in the Splat Group, which is through the Idaho Commission for Libraries. So really excited to have Chris as a part of our team and wanted to introduce him to all of you. This is something that I normally do as well, it's been, the last couple of years, it's been hard to keep track of statistics and the emerging technology department was something that was brand-new, what do we actually want to be tracking? But this is from October 1st of 2021 up until yesterday when we had a program. You can see that we've served 8,264 members during that time. And the bottom chart here just kind of breaks down, we have a couple of teams that we serve. We had quite a few elementary school students that are able to serve through the emerging technology programs on the discovery bus and also at our libraries. And then we also had quite a few programs that weren't necessarily targeted toward teens or for elementary school students, it was for all ages. And that's what you're seeing here, so that is grandparents, that's parents, that's the kiddos that were with them, that's the entire family enjoying a program either on the bus, at one of our community partnerships, or at one of our libraries. That kind of gives you a, this is really the first time that we've tracked numbers this well as we're kind of, you know, it was a new department and then things were a little bit strange for a couple of years. So we're excited to have a baseline for this year of how many people we serve and to improve these numbers, improve the quality and quantity of services that we're able to provide. That's the next thing that we wanted to talk about is some of the services that emerging technology is involved in. 3D printing is something that we've talked about quite a bit. That was one of the first services that emerging technology was involved in. It's still something that we're able to offer at many of our libraries. We have printers that are rotating to some of our smaller libraries as well as a printer that lives here at Hayden, one that lives at Post Falls. But if the printer is not near you, you can also go onto our website, order something and come and pick it up at one of the libraries. I looked it up today and we've printed over 6,000 items for our members since we started that service in 2019. It's pretty exciting. Another something we're really excited about this summer is we partnered with services as well as circulation, as well as bookmobile, to get out to all of the different days, celebrations that are happening over the summer. So whether that was Hayden Days, or Tiger Stakes, or Post Falls Days, or for the July up in Spirit Lake, we went over to Harrison, we were able to cover pretty much our entire network, bathroom days we went to, that's why we're in this, Apple, we also did go out to Apple Day. So we were able to hit all of those different places, able to represent the library, but also to offer a whole bunch of technology and also give away a whole bunch of free books. So kind of that traditional literacy alongside that digital literacy at the same time. You'll also notice that LinkedIn Learning is on your screen right now. This is a program, it is a work-at-your-own-pace video program for professional development. It is something that our staff can use, but it is also something that our members have full access to. Right now, we have a year-long subscription to LinkedIn Learning. We're about halfway through that process right now. And this is something that we're excited about because it's something that all of our adult members, we can give them introductions to things at our libraries and our adult programs do a fantastic job of giving introductions. But if someone wants to do a deeper dive into a topic, whether that is Photoshop, whether that is building your resume, whether that is planning out, where do I want to be when I grow up? LinkedIn Learning has deep-dive topics from experts, sources on all of those different subjects. So that is a resource that we're excited that we can offer to our members. And Chris and I have been going around chatting with all of our different library staffs who've been traveling around the network, saying what's been working for our members, what's been working for staff and how can we also help to promote this resource moving forward? So those are some of the network services that emerging technology is involved with. There's a whole bunch of different events that emerging technology did this year. You know, 8,000 people participated in these programs. I just want to mention a couple of them. On the left side, this is actually up at the Harrison Library. This is one of our sub-disassembly required events. When I would go to a TED Talk where I would watch a webinar online and it would be these, these people that are entrepreneurs, they own gigantic companies. Something that they would often mention is, when I was a little kid, I would sit in my parents' basement and I would take apart jump stairs and I would try to put it back together and it would be crazy, it wouldn't work. But it was something that they had an experience when they were young. So we wanted to bring that experience into the library. So at pretty much all of our libraries, we either offered the opportunity on the discovery bus and just parked it outside the library, or if the weather was being a little uncooperative, then we just did it in the meeting room as well. One thing most about that picture there is you have parents that are participating right alongside those students. So it is those kiddos, but it's also the adults sharing what they know about the insights of a computer, but also then learning more about what's on the inside of a computer, the inside of a vacuum. It was really exciting program. On the right-hand side, we partnered with adult programming to offer Maker Extravaganza. So in the forefront of the picture there, they're actually cutting up old t-shirts and turning them into drawstring bags. We had our Glowforge laser printer, which allows you to cut out things out of wood or leather or X-stains in the glass, which is really cool. Our 3D printers were there and we also had resin jewelry. So you're able to pour resin in, add some sparkles and things to it, and then it would cure it under a UV light. So once again, the having people make things so they can take home with them. And that was another fantastic program. One more thing I wanted to mention before we move on from this slide, we were able to go as part of a grant through TDS Fiber. We were able to take the discovery bus to six different elementary schools. The way that we chose those elementary schools was looking at the free and reduced lunch numbers and seeing the students from these schools, which ones might be struggling more than others. We chose a couple of schools in the Coeur d'Alene School District, in the Post Falls School District, in the Lakeland School District, as well as, I'm trying to remember to name the school district that's yours, Tiger Stakes. Guys, it's not, yeah, it's just showing, I apologize, I did not get the name accurate. But we also headed out that direction. And what we did was we gave everyone a free book and then we also gave them a spam activity. The first activity that we did was making your own light-up bookmark. So they were able to do circuits, they were plugging in batteries and things. And the second one we did was a school race car. So they were figuring out physics, if I have a bigger wheel and smaller rubber bands, does it go faster or slower? So that problem solver was also happening, which is really cool. So those were just a couple of the highlights of programs that we did this last year. Finally, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the underpinnings of the emerging technology departments. This is something that we've developed, those three kinds of terms at the bottom there, technology access, which is, hey, come take a look at this Glowforge, come take a look at this 3D printer. Digital literacy, which is, okay, well, now you've seen it, how do you use that thing? How do I, how do I upload a picture to an email and send that to my grandchild? That's digital literacy. And the last underpinning of the emerging technology department is the growth mindset. I am not good at drawing pictures. I can barely draw stick figures. But the idea of the growth mindset is that I can get better. It might not be right now, I'm not going to be pockpock though tomorrow, but with mentorship, with a community, with time spent, with that investment, I can get so much better. I can get so much better at drawing, that's one of my goals. So the emerging technology department is about bringing those tools and those skills to all members of our community. Thank you so much for your time. What questions do you have for me?
And that's not going over, oh, my, my, my time. Always good to see you, always excited to hear you speak.
Thank you.
Uh, I know how important this program is. It's just exciting every time I hear about it or read about it.
Yeah.
Um, I'm also excited that you have a line item on, or that there is a line item.
I was super excited about that too.
Yeah, no, I was really excited, I think we're all excited to see that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Absolutely.
Um, I think I was in the category of a bit of a skeptic on the entire emerging technology department. And so I won't ever forget your presentation to us as to why it was important to the community. And the reports ever since are just phenomenal. Um, my son went to one of the disassembly required event and just he wanted to go to every single one after that. So she manages it. So, um, yeah, so stellar programming, Nick, as always of your reports. I do have a question, which you probably know the answer to, but on our calendar that's on the website and you can go and there's categories to see what programs are happening. Is there a category in there if you just want to see the emerging technology programs?
Uh, this time not so much. And the reason for that is through the last couple of years, the discovery bus has been largely a requested vehicle. So there weren't a lot of times where folks could just happen upon the discovery bus out of the community. Cause most of the time it was going to Summer Plus, or it was going to the Crocs Center, or it was going to some accretion academy. And because of that, there weren't a lot of open times on the discovery bus to actually put onto the calendar. So it didn't make sense to put down like the, the one event or something like that for an entire category. But that's something that as we move forward, we're hoping to obviously keep the, those requests as something that we can do with the discovery bus. But we also want to build in time where it's on second Wednesdays, discovery bus is here and you can come and find us. And on third Thursdays, the discovery bus is going to be over here and you can come find us. That way there actually is kind of a, a consistent calendar. And those events would be available on calendar there. So it's something that we're working toward right now.
Awesome.
I love that you foster entrepreneurs and I enjoy watching the audience reaction as you were talking about things.
Looks like.
I just wish you were more into the edge.
I'll, I'll try, I'll try, need more coffee today or something.
Um, I was excited when I saw you on the agenda because I loved listening to you.
Thank you.
Uh, but as much as I love listening to you, my little eight-year-old neighbor who, who spends time when mom and dad are at work with grandma and grandma as well, are crazy huge fans of Disassembly and have followed it around. And gone to more than one.
Awesome. Very cool, very cool.
Um, I am kind of in Regina, was in Regina's camp, like, really? What are we doing? Emerging technologies, what is that? Do you know, but you had me at digital, digital literacy. I remember that very clearly. I mean, absolutely. I was like, oh yeah, okay. But what is impressing me is watching of the thought that's put in like those three categories. It's like, okay, now we're starting on a plan. Now we're getting some focus in, into the program and I, I, it's wonderful to be able to watch that in.
Thank you.
Um, so good job, good job.
And that's something, having another staff member is allowing us to actually put wheels to some of these things. Cause when you're sitting in an office by yourself, you're having to do the planning stuff. You're actually having to be on the bus, you're having to be at every single library. So having Chris as that extra support in the emerging technology department has allowed us to actually move some things forward to kind of, to get rid of some of the backlog the emerging technology department had. So thank you for mentioning that. It's, it's only going to get better from here.
That sounds great.
Awesome.
Thank you so much, Sonny.
Great.
Okay, thank you for the light, very much. All right, now the next item on our agenda is consent agenda. And I will entertain discussion and or motion concerning consent. And if you're all moved, we accept it, we can go on to some discussion. Okay, uh, it's been moved to accept the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple. On uh, Monday eighteenth, or eighteen of July, Harrison Library, uh, on page two, paragraph last whole line.
Everybody got that?
Yeah, all right. Oh, right. Sorry, it's the uh, a local church donated a wooden submarine for people to take their picture. Their picture in. Yeah. Okay, and then um, Thursday twenty-one, July.
Yeah, I, I, I all of a sudden I was like, why don't we go, anybody else have anything on the eighteen? Cause I actually, oh, so hang on a second, anybody else have anything on eighteen? I do, um, down under circulation statistics. And I thought about it. Um, instead of, I asked about the people counters. I want, really what I was trying to ask about was the accuracy of the people. Okay, we're sorry, we should say. Accuracy, I was accuracy. Right, and before we leave that topic, I thought that they were so accurate that they knew if the same person was running in and out. Is that not so?
What it does do is it will subtract, so it's not counting somebody twice. So if you walk in and then walk back out, that's one. You know, it's, so it's not two. But it doesn't necessarily, uh, you know, I mean, if somebody's doing it over and over and they're the same exact size and shape, it might, but it's, it's not like it's um, I have the hologram, you know, type thing to know exactly.
It's not doing like facial recognition.
Exactly. It's not that sophisticated.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, so Thursday twenty-one of July. Page two. Uh, that small paragraph starts, uh, the free, second sentence, consent was to bring the, the free loan change. No, right, it's the. That strike to the bug. And then, uh, let's see. Okay, um, the under budget discussion, first bullet point, about halfway down the sentence starts with me, or the word is maintain. Maintenance is more costly more in the long run. I'm not sure exactly what that is, hopefully. Probably the same, right? Um, Meyer noted that delaying repairs and maintenance is more costly more in the long run.
Oh, I take out the more, I think, yeah, I think so. Because what I was highlighting was if you prefer maintenance, it'll get you sooner or later.
Yeah.
You're like, oh. Okay, let's strike in the morning.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, the homework on the, the meeting of the twenty-first of July. There, on the first page, we were discussing the strategic plan presented by Library Strategies. Um, that first bullet point, the sentence that starts right before the last line, staff will then develop and share an implementation plan. There's an extra V, right? Staff is going to develop and share an implementation plan, I think is how that should read. And on page two, I wanted to just, you know, kudos to Chanel for capturing our lively budget discussion. I was just very, very impressed with the note taking. Um, I, I don't think it's easy when we're all, you know, we have so many views that we want to get out there. So, um, this one just really struck me because the discussion is so lengthy. But I, I think there's a error in um, the last motion of the page because typically whoever makes the motion, the name accompanies the motion. So Robinson made the motion for a zero percent and that motion failed in the paragraph that references Robinson. The next one, it references Meyer as having moved to accept the budget with the two percent growth. But then when the motion is referenced at the bottom as to whether or not the motion carried, it references my name, but I think it was Meyer that made the motion. But whichever one it is, it should be consistent. You remember Judy?
That's why I missed.
I think it was, I remember, well, I don't know.
I moved to so. Looking at paragraph, the bullet point.
I think that might have been Judy, but we can double check the recording.
Oh, yes, it's our memories, not to be rate, yeah. Um, I, and I, those are, yeah, those are on my team. All right. Well, have there been other changes to the consent agenda? Okay, it's been moved to accept the consent agenda, but we're changing. With the changes suggested, um, all those in favor?
All right.
On our, with you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Community Library Network. Provide twenty twenty-two financial statement. Um, discussion in for on motion or. Moving on to motion and then have discussion? We moved to accept the financial statements for July twenty twenty-two. Okay, it's been moved to accept the Community Library Network financial statements for July twenty twenty-two. Discussion, questions? No, anything? Anything you'd have to say?
No, I mean, we're at um, the end of ten months, so we just have two months left in the fiscal year. Um, so most things are, um, you know, we're, um, we're tracking pretty well. Um, in, in a few areas and repairs and maintenance were over, but then you'll see that in two other line items with repair and maintenance were under. So that's all um, to balance out. But yeah, just two more months, so um, so, but everything is quite on track. So no, we have had, we continue to have vehicle expenses that are very unexpected. We've now, um, the discovery bus, the bookmobile and the Sprinter van have been into the shop multiple times. And it was just a couple of months.
Yay.
And all the repairs are at least three times what we are expecting, so.
Oh, yeah.
I can follow that. Yeah, then if you look at that, uh, I'm sure you go through the cost analysis about how much we put into open heart surgery versus starting over. What are you finding?
Well, so far like with the discovery bus, because that was a grant and we got it for very cheap, that even though those repairs have been expensive to replace the discovery bus, we would not have gotten a deal that we got for the discovery bus. So right now it does not make sense to, to replace that. Um, the Sprinter van, um, that's just a costly um, item to repair because it is a Mercedes vehicle and finding people certified in that type of repair is pretty expensive. I think if it was up to Randy, our facilities manager, you would not buy that type of vehicle, that brand in the future just based on the difficulty. But it does, um, I think it's, um, and we've already known this, is when we do our facilities master planning next year, we need to factor in our vehicles, the large vehicles, not necessarily the, the just get-around vehicles. But um, and see what's really um, cost-effective if we ever do need to replace. Is it the exact thing? Do we go with a smaller footprint? What are the actual uses of those? Um, but nothing's on its last legs yet. So even though the repairs have been expensive, it would be far more expensive to replace at this point. And we do not have any money, but at the moment.
You remember what we think? Seventy-five hundred dollars.
It was.
It was unbelievable, it was unbelievable. But to point, but then you're using the word facilities, that reminds me, I need a picture to these facilities for us, the discovery bus. Sprinter van, discovery bus and the bookmobile. That's it, even worse, okay. So that's part of what that facility is kind of be the border going to work on. And you'll get a tip for it to what the future is for all these facilities, including the four-wheel ones. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions or concerns about the budget or about the financial statement? All right, it's been moved to um, accept the Community Library Network's financial statements for July twenty twenty-two. All those in favor? All right, and anybody who. Then it's stated on the agenda, are the circulation statistics? Um, and that doesn't require any kind of motion. So um, did you want, Amy, would you, do you have anything you'd like to say about them?
Um, a couple of things, um, almost all of our um, locations, probably, you know, five out of the seven, um, were busier in July than June, like quite a bit busier. And then we do, we're starting to kind of now able to look back at um, pre-twenty twenty, you know, in terms of another full year that had a full comparison. And we do have three locations um, that are well over their um, twenty nineteen numbers. Um, Harrison, Pinehurst and Spirit Lake are a bit over that. And then in um, internet and computer usage, um, Harrison Rathrum and Spirit Lake are well over on those twenty nineteen numbers. And then um, in terms of visits, I think we're still um, close, but Apple's the one that's probably over their um, twenty nineteen numbers in terms of people visits. Um, but then really, yeah, everything was up over um, for the most part over June. So yeah, it's been a very busy summer, um, as you referenced, Hayden's busy, but I, I could say that for almost all of our locations when we walk in. So it's been a good summer.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, anything else? Anybody want to comment on or any of the other circulation thing? All right, and then the next item on the agenda is the director's report.
All right, let me find it. Wait, I'm consistent. I think I pulled it out for a second, so. Okay, I, I just um, found it. I, I think just the main thing I want to highlight is we are kicking off with our um, project neighborly events. So um, we did get a, um, kind of just as a reminder, we did get a grant from the Idaho Community Foundation for Project Neighborly. And those have kicked off here in August, and then there'll be some in um, August, September and even early October, I believe. Um, and so um, Spirit Lake has already had theirs, and that was on August second. They partnered with um, National Night Out. And um, that was really successful. Post Falls will be this Saturday for Neighbor Fest. And then Harrison on the twenty-seventh of August, um, Family Festival um, in Harrison. So those are really fun and we're really excited to be able to, um, to do those. So all of those are some, and we're calling them different. And though we're um, kind of promoting them under the umbrella of Project Neighborly. Um, so Neighbor Fest for Post Falls Family Festival. But the idea really is to connect people with people and to um, also be able to connect them with the library. So a combination of performers, um, food, active crafts, hands-on activities. So those have been really exciting. And then um, we were really excited, um, Youth Services did kind of um, submitted um, some applications to United Way of North Idaho and um, really um, received a generous stipend to do um, sensory programming and expand their hygiene, hygiene hampers and launch into learning. So we're really um, excited about that and I'm excited to see what we're going to be able to, to do with that. And then um, just a couple of things, um, you know, we're starting to um, remember, we don't always include kind of all of the, the press articles that we get, but we're starting to, to make sure we include that in the library reports. Um, Pinehurst had included there, so it wasn't with the press, because I didn't want to give it to you twice. But there's a really lovely article in the Shishan Press on kind of just different adult programming events of the Pinehurst Library. And Jessica there did a great job um, there of kind of just highlighting some of the different events. So that was really fun. Then there was a highlight of um, one of our Youth Services events at, is it parent's, sorry? In front of me, um, at, sorry, at, yes, um, at Camp Canelan. So that was, um, that was really fun to see that highlighted. And we had a reporter reach out just to kind of talk a little bit about some of um, library materials. So that article is included as well. And I think that was, and just a couple of things I wanted to share, you know, in terms of some of the um, books that were referenced earlier during public comment, a couple of those. Um, actually, one of those, um, our library system does not own, so the book, Drag Queen, Hipscotch, Swish, 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 we don't own that one, so. And then another one, Fun Home that was referenced, that is an adult book, so that has always been in our adult section. And the handout that has, was circulated and referenced to, there are a number of books in there, particularly the first few pages that are not even owned by our library system. So I just want to make sure that we're kind of helping to, to at least share um, some correct information as we try to work through and address the concerns.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Because doesn't um, Coeur d'Alene Library have the Drag Queen? So that can be accessed through, you're just saying it wouldn't be sitting on the shelf?
Right.
To let them be.
Right, it would not be on display and it would not.
It would be in the session of like them to come pick it up. Be in the session of like them to come pick it up or whatever.
On, on the whole shelf if they had placed it. So if they were talking about seeing in the children's section, they're talking about their experience of the Portolein, actually.
And I have a question as well. Um, and the article, it says, uh. The criticism of library confidence continues. Um, and so that Rhoda had said, we've had a few concerns from a very small group. Um, and I was wondering how many signatures were on that petition again from the scene of having, wasn't it like three or four hundred?
Right, and this is where you're not always, um, correctly quoted by the press, because I, I said we've had some concerns from a group, you know, a group of individuals, is kind of how, I, I said it, which group can be, um, but I did not say necessarily very small, but, um, yeah, I think there was three hundred and something signatures. The petition.
Thinking about how in your Neighbor Fest report, you ran out, do we have a comment for the folks who attend these events, kind of in a sense of, I don't know, how, how do you work?
Um, sure, so, um, yes, we do keep track of all of our kind of program and event, um, stats, so we'll be able to pull those, um, at the end of those.
And I can say that the, um, one that was at Spirit Lake, they had, um, at least three hundred and fifty, possibly as many as five hundred and fifty people.
And it's important to me, I think, I'm sure, I'm sure you do, that the folks that gave us the grant want to know that it worked.
Yes.
So I assume you'll be counting it anyway, but it helped us now too, thank you.
Thirty-three questions on your report, Amy.
Okay.
The, the first being, um, regarding controversial books that people come to the meetings and tell us about, there's obviously a process in place for those books to be challenged. We as a governmental body can only act upon things that are properly for us because of notice and opportunity to be heard. When people come to the meetings and, and have concerns, are they told, and I know that the material selection policy is in the back, maybe we should have the form that's also there to challenge a book. Are they told that that's the channel? To, to bring those issues to up for, for actual substantive consideration?
And so typically, since the comments have been towards the board, it's either been that we've responded to it either through, through our board meetings, so we aren't necessarily, I mean, that hasn't been our practice to then, um, as staff members reach out individually to, to those that have done public comment, because our comments have been directed at the board meeting um, towards the board, you know, unless there was a specific question that was raised that was very you know, um, staff oriented, but that's why we do have, and the materials and programs document does have the reconsideration process mentioned in there, and so we have, um, for the last several months have included that document, um, at every board meeting.
And I recognize that we are going to be discussing, it's on an agenda, a future meeting to discuss the material selection policy, so possibly that's what, where the public comment is coming from, so that when we take up that policy, we'll incorporate that feedback, but I'm just saying for the members of the public that have stayed with us that there is a channel for asking or requesting for a book to be removed, it can't suas fonte be done at a board meeting. Um, my second question about your report, um. Well, I'm just going to ask both of them at the same time, so then you can answer both of them at the same time and I can yield my time to others, but because there is some lead time on our board packet and you have to prepare it in advance, I was wondering if we have an update on when we might get the, um, the compensation study completed, and then next, I know that Alice is an acronym and I just can't quite remember what it is.
I got this, I looked it up. Here.
Asset limited income constraint employed.
Yeah. It's asset limited, income, income constraint employed.
So they're employed?
Yes.
But their income is limited and more constrained.
Correct, right, so this is a task force that's looking to essentially help those, those employed individuals, but that may still have gaps in income where they may still not be able to fully, um, pay their rent every month or, um, pay um, enough for groceries or childcare, et cetera.
Well, I think it's a very, I mean, yeah, I have heard of it, so I think it's great that you have made that connection and are, are trying to work with that group.
Yes, and then on the compensation study, um, they had a couple of questions last week, um, and so, um, they were going to go find answers to those, well, I gave them leads on where to go find those answers. So I have a tickler to follow up with them tomorrow, I wanted to give them a week of, of getting their answers to then, um, get the target date. Um, so as soon as I know that, I will happily, because I'm very eager to know that as well, I'll happily email them.
Yeah, and you, well, you know we are too, yeah.
Anybody else? I, I was impressed by the Alice task force too, and that's what prompted, like, I don't want to walk in not knowing what it was, because I know you said something about it before, I think. And, um, I, I'm, I'm excited that you're involved in that, anybody else want to, one of these? Have a third?
I can keep it.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
All right. All right, thank you very much, the next item on the agenda, let me get prepared for that little thing to start, the next item on the agenda is the discussion of the strategic plan. And I have a little intro to that. Get it out. Um. So if you know, thank goodness for minutes, because I'm not sure I would have. But thank you, thank you, thank you, Danelle, and thank you for the two of you for putting this together. Because it, and there is actually a motion on the table right now to, and the motion is, and you guys read it when you read your minutes. Motion, the motion is, the free move to adopt the strategic plan is presented by Library Strategies. And then that was amended and that motion to amend it was included. So it was amended to add a fifth strategy to goal four, which was cultivate public trust by implementing consistent member friendly, friendly policies and procedures, so we have a motion to accept the strategic plan with the changes of adding this fifth strategy to cultivate public trust.
Public, pardon?
Public, sign in motion. Okay, if you, on, on the, uh, July twenty first. And then it says, the special, we've got a strategic plan, the first bullet point that McCree moved. Then on the second page, it talks about the amendments that was made and we, we voted to accept them and then it showed that. And then McCree requested to table her motion to accept the strategic plan, so I feel, wait a minute, let me finish, let me finish my little thing and then you guys can follow you. So I pulled out my book and it turns out that we didn't quite do this really completely right. Um, so I will tell you, and, and we're not going to get jailed, I just don't. But because we didn't do, um, but, but basically, well, first of all, um. What I would like to say, before I talk about, uh, tabling the motion, I want to go down and said, it says consensus um, was to bring the, the motion to the next regular meeting. Consensus is a very real way of being able to vote on, we use Robert's Rules of Order for small boards and consensus, consensus is a questionable way of voting. Um, so we did okay with that, the motion that should have been, it should have been put to postpone to a certain time. Um, the, instead of table, table is used for emergency, it's used um, postponing to a certain time, so basically we did the right thing, we postponed it to a certain time, so we postponed this motion, so the motion is still alive and on the table. So what we are in right now is, we are in discussion of this motion, which is to adopt the strategic plan as presented by Library Strategies. Um, and, and add a fifth strategy to goal four cultivating public trust by implementing consistent member friendly policies and procedures, so that's where we're at in terms of discussion. And we want to, but I would like, before we move on to discussion, I would like Amy, would you like to address this, the strategic plan a little bit? And, um. Not just, I mean, for however you'd like to address the strategic plan, just a little bit.
Well, really, no, I mean, I don't necessarily have um, a lot to say, I just kind of wanted to share, you know, we've talked quite a bit about the process that was used. Um, you know, where we, um, started with, um, a staff survey, community survey, um, we did the community retreats, um, stakeholder interviews and then, you know, there was, um, data gathered, you know, in terms of library usage, um, demographics and so forth, so really kind of, we can look at all the bullet points in here and the goals and strategies and map them back to where we heard that feedback, so I just really kind of wanted to share that, that this really is, um, the plan itself was, um, you know, Library Strategies, what we hired them for, to use their expertise to facilitate that community input in terms of different, um, methods of, of data gathering, um, but then we also use their expertise to then pull together everything they heard, how, you know, distilling that. But we can look at each of these bullet points and we can go back to either the staff's survey summary, the community survey summary, the, um, notes from the community retreat and, you know, not one of these were like, um. Just because, um, say Nick the consultant or because he heard Amy say something and it's Amy's little point, so just kind of a reminder that this really is what we heard from those community members that were involved in the process.
Okay. Um, I, I think that that's really important, I do remember that um. In looking at the different companies, one of the things that impressed me the most about Library Strategies was the lengths to which they reached out into the community for community hackers, and so when Amy said to me she could track back every single bullet point, every single goal to one of these that we have received, that's important to know that that came, it came from community input. And not, that's, that's what I, I was a little afraid that we'd get a little afraid late of you know, what, this is what li, you know, libraries are supposed to do, you know, but that is not uh, what has happened and, um, that was reassuring for me. Um, okay.
We've had a couple of versions of these, one July noted in July eighteen, is the one we're working on, folks, because that's the re, final report.
And then it's the final report from Library Strategies, but, um, with the bullet point, so we wanted to wait until the strategic plan was adopted to take any other changes, but because Library Strategies did the formatting on this, I don't have the document to reformat or anything of that nature. And we don't want to go back then piecemeal because the discussion wasn't finished, so, um, what you have in front of you, um, is what we're working off of and just remember to then include that, um, that amended motion, right?
So, what, my notes from the last time we looked at it. Uh, I don't know, last time we were studying. Or, there's no, no other changes that's happened, this, you can't change it.
Well, no, and I wouldn't change it because it either needs to be what, you know, the consultants originally drafted from the community or what the board either voted on to include.
Good, thank you.
Is there any more? Uh, yes, I move to, uh, further amend the strategic plan. Um, under goal number one, strike, uh, the last bullet point. But it says, you buy community experts to build connection through network wide programming. Also, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, uh, the last bullet point, under goal number one. Strike, under goal number two, the third bullet point, that says collaborate with social service providers to get vital resources and or information to those who are in need. One more time, go back to it. Goal three, uh, goal two. Third bullet point.
These are the ones you're highly interested in, strike, yes.
Uh, under goal three. Strike, the first bullet point, it says increase efforts to make library cards ubiquitous and easily obtained. Under goal number four. Strike, the uh, fourth bullet point, it says amplify support for current library values and literacy, intellectual freedom and open access. And finally, under goal number five, strike the third bullet point that says create narratives and responses that affirm Community Library Network and American public library values. So staff and board members can be effective ambassadors for Community Library Network and its vital role in the community.
Are you going to provide us with a rationale for your objections to those bullet points?
Uh, yes, I, I am. This is waiting for you to care.
Um, so it's been moved to strike bullet points from goal one, bullet point one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. She ma, she moved to amend.
Okay.
And so she's moving to amend the, the motion to include striking from goal number one, bullet point one, two, three, four. Seven, from goal number two, bullet point three. From goal number three, bullet point one. From goal number four, bullet point four. And from goal number five, bullet point three. So, in terms of discussion, you have asked. Um, Regina has asked, would, would you care to explain?
Um, so first of all, I do believe that the entire being is a strategically strategic plan. It allows just about anything and everything, it seems more tailored to the, the, the agenda of Marxist tools of, uh, DEI and child grooming or promiscuous sexuality and theophilia, um, than actually tailored to our community. Um, it's so vague, but many of the examples, the presenters encouraged on how the strategic plan can be carried out. Exemplify the leftist woke agenda and I have no doubt that this is how CLN will carry it out.
Do you have any evidence?
Uh, yeah, it's the things that they said, I'll get to those.
Okay.
All right, for goal number one, uh, bullet point number seven, I asked to be struck. Um, the um, the company, um, the strategic plan company that, that we I'm not sure if they said department or essentially that's what it would be. Uh, to identify misinformation and put forth correct information to the community. Um, it is not the proper role of government to control information or belief and, um. Also with that one. Uh, the network wide programming seems like that would encourage a homogenous library and, and each individual library lives at its level type. Um, under goal number two.
Can we hang on a second? Um, I'm wondering if we want to talk about each one of these, would you prefer that?
I certainly would.
Okay. Okay, um, then go ahead, uh, Regina, are you, let me get my checklist and.
Well, I guess I'm struggling with the verbiage of bullet point number seven. Utilize community experts and build connection through network wide program. I would like to understand how you take issue with the library utilizing community experts to present programs, which happens all the time, it happens all the time, and not only that, building connection through network wide programming. Um, it's been shown, and certainly during your tenure on the board, I think you would appreciate that we are trying to ensure that the public understands that this is a network of libraries, and so if you missed Alex Zerpy, whatever his name was, the magician, if you missed the magician in Post Falls, you could go see the magician in Spirit Lake, or you could go see, you know, if you really liked the magician, you could go see him three times, so I, I can't understand why we would discourage building connection through having network wide programming, and in fact, I think that lies in the face of everything that we've been trying to do with our marketing ever since becoming a district, particularly when Close Falls came into the network.
Vanessa? Um, I think we already talked about this bullet point, uh, before, I think so. Because, uh, I think the community experts were, were what you had issue with before. And when I said that I went to the Beekeeping one oh one.
Yeah.
And definitely a community expert and I enjoy it so much. And if, it's because some programs are where they're in Pinehurst, probably not, but I'll say Pinehurst. Somewhere that's further away from me and I'm like, well, my day is pretty busy. I won't be able to make that program that I would like to go to because it's over there, so I literally look for things at Close Falls. And I see that I miss out on other ones I'm interested in. Um. Obviously, every library location couldn't and wouldn't have the same program. Um, but I don't, I don't see a problem with this bullet point at all. Unless you only look at it through eyes that you think they're purposely going to have bad programs or bad people. But there's so many great, amazing programs and it takes community experts and, like the beekeeping lady, she doesn't, she didn't get paid. But there's so many great, amazing programs and it takes community experts and, like the beekeeping lady, she doesn't, she didn't get paid, right?
They might, she might have.
I mean, occasionally you get a stipend of like $50 if they go to, or you might be paid mileage.
So that, I mean, that.
But sometimes they volunteer.
Right. And then network wide, like I said, there's a lot that I see in other places that I don't go to that. That will, I don't see any, any, any problems with at all.
Amy? I'm just gonna say, kind of the reason, kind of if we're gonna delete several bullet points, that's really discounting the community feedback and community input. And on that one, utilize community experts and build community connections through community wide programming. That was specifically mentioned in the community survey a few different times, and also in the community retreat. And even the, I think one of the examples the consultants used, but this is where we will do an implementation plan. So their examples were literally just examples. It said the library would could help individuals identify misinformation. There are a variety of different public libraries, school libraries, academic libraries that teach information literacy classes, like how to spot, you know, a reputable source, how to do things. And those, again, community survey is exactly where someone mentioned that. So again, these were not that wasn't the consultant that said you should do that. This was in the community survey.
Anybody else?
You know, I just wanted to make sure that it's not used to impose a ministry of truth that changes information and answers what the public can say or.
The word misinformation was used as an example, it's not written here.
No, it's not, but that's what they were suggesting and that's.
In the library world, trying to get out really accurate information is really important. In the educational world and the library world, and that is what they were referring to, is to try to get out the most accurate information possible, not necessarily. And then that's what they're referring to. That's, that has been an issue for libraries forever.
Oh, come on, when we're gonna utilize community experts and this is under our control, we choose the community experts that we're gonna use, this is not in progress anywhere else. Our responsibility and certainly our director will do that to be finding the accurate sources. There are plenty of experts out there. Which ones are the accurate ones will be an ongoing challenge for our new staff and us if we sort them. But for me, it sounds really comfortable that they suggest this and then we go do it. And that's, that's the queen's week. Amy gets to do it. When we hear things along the way, I think we respect them to our staff to say, watch out for this. Or I've heard from the Hooning College, it's a really good person there, so tap on, tap into their resources. So that's why I was a little bit.
Charlie, is there something you'd like to say?
Yeah, I just feel like we've spent a lot of time and we've hit it hard since Amy's gotten here. Without community experts, we have a far more limited ability to produce programs. And I think that when we read the board reports and talk about it here, we realize that, like, who knew that Vanessa would go to beekeeping? But yeah, I just, I don't understand why we would not tap community to broaden what we do, to make us just that much more relevant to our members.
Yeah, I guess I don't have a problem with some uses of experts. I just wanted the public to know that ministry of truth is something that may be considered to be instituted at a later time in the library.
I mean, I can safely say we've never ever talked about that, we've never done it in a role.
Right, I don't. I don't know that I have never heard ministry of truth being. Okay, did you, are we done with that one? Shall we go to goal two, bullet point three?
Collaborating with social service providers, it sounds like. I went to the fair one time and walk-in fair is a very expensive place. It's where people go if they've got the extra money, you know, that they don't need to meet their basic needs. And there were booths at every single entrance to the fair where they were signing people up for welfare. And I would not want that to be something that the, that the library is involved in, signing people up for welfare. Because we don't need more people on welfare that we can, people in certain ability to take care of themselves. What we need is more self-sufficient capable adults. Would you like to address that, Amy?
I think this bullet point came directly from the community retreat and stakeholder interviews where they just talked about other organizations that the library could partner with. And some of the examples that were given were like the Alice Task Force. So that's helping employ people that may be unable to meet all of their needs. Because as the cost of living goes up, as the cost of housing goes up, even someone who's gainfully employed may not be able to meet some of those needs despite their best efforts of self-sufficiency. And it also talked about collaborating with mental health resources, providing lists of community resources to patrons. Many libraries, you know, compile that. We already have a little bit on our website. So again, these were suggestions from our community members.
So I just would like to say, it says collaborate with social service providers to get vital resources and or information to those who are in need. So the library may have some resources or information to those who are struggling. I don't understand why we, I mean, that's what we do. I mean, to those who are struggling, we have job search programs, don't we have, I mean, those kinds of things, yeah. I don't see as you know, vital resources are what we have for the library.
One of the issues we've had over the years was the homeless folk and some that live nearby who were coming to our library to brush their teeth and use the facility because they were homeless. And as I recall, what we did was find information about where they could go to get those services and get help. And so we would in fact visit with or offer, give pieces of paper with a phone number and a way for them to go and get services. Because we couldn't provide them all and shouldn't provide them all. Did they have your number that long away? Am I the only one that got it up?
No, I absolutely agree with you Judy. I am, I'm struggling to comprehend how this bullet point, Rochelle, to you equates to welfare. When I read this bullet point, it does not in any way, shape or form lead me to conclude that the library has an agenda to get people on welfare. Certainly, I, I just, I think you twisted it to an unrecognizable end. One of the most vocal people at the retreat was a minister, I don't remember his name, but this was his refrain. He kept coming back to this and saying and recognizing that rightly or wrongly, people are in need, people in need come to the library. And this individual wanted the library to just be aware that churches are available to help those in need. So again, why would our libraries not be in which they are well positioned to help those in our community who are in need? So I'm absolutely opposed to removing that bullet point.
Vanessa?
I, I think, especially the way like what Judy said about people being sent here to get information on how to better websites. If you look at it that way, it makes a hundred percent sense. If you look at it in a way that, because I do believe that there's a lot of money wasted on several different social service programs. If you look at it in a way that the library is going to become a social service program, I would totally disagree with that, or I wouldn't want that. But seeing it's a way that Judy and I think that maybe you mentioned as well, it makes, it makes a hundred percent sense for people to come here and better their, their brains for some, who knows, mechanics or there's so many books, you can learn things and actually get educated. Or, you know, YouTube programs that you can get educated and help you get a job or better the job you already have. So I don't, I don't see a problem with that unless you are thinking the library is going to turn into a social service program or provider.
I know along the way we helped with the Labor Department providing information for both types of resumes, they don't have access to a computer. So coming here to use a computer, because you can't fill out otherwise anymore. Was a way that we coordinated with the state to help for library.
And sorry, if I could follow up, it was in our board reports just this month, in the coordinator our youth services coordinator's report regarding the Anovia Foundation launching with last committee. Which is, says right in here, initiative comprised of stakeholders who come together to ensure that every child has the opportunity and support to pursue their career or college of choice and meet their full potential. This is exactly the sort of thing that I think that that bullet point is targeting. I don't know why we would discourage. I mean, I don't know if you read that in the report Rochelle, but that's absolutely something the library should be doing and is doing.
Our job essentially is to disseminate information. And I'm particularly supportive of all the places in here that talks about partnerships. This is a wonderful example of a partnership that puts us in a much better position to direct people and support people. And I don't know why we would not do that. We don't sign people up for welfare. That is not anywhere in our description or our mission. But we do try and support the community. So I'm just not sure why we wouldn't do that.
I think it's good to have the conversation. I like the idea of helping people to help themselves. Makes stronger, more resilient people. It just seems like a lot of this is carefully inverted to sound good, but it can definitely be abused and used to promote Marxism in our community.
One of the things that will happen after we after we approve a strategic plan is that, when is, when is the implementation plan, Darlene?
Well, we need to adopt it first, but the ideal would be that in September, because we did want the strategic plan to cover fiscal years 2023 through 2025. And the year starts October 1st, so, so yeah, hopefully we'll be doing that in September.
So the implementation plan is part of what we purchased. And that has one of the consultants coming to visit us to work with the staff on the implementation plan on specifically what. These are, these have to be general, that's where the board starts with policy. Then we hand it over after we've agreed to these areas, then we hand it over to staff and they will produce an implementation plan. If they were to produce a plan to sign people up for welfare, we would see that on the implementation plan. So if some of these have to be big, if they're not, if they're not more general, then we are moving into becoming that. And that isn't our, that's not our job. So that's part of, that is part of the way that you will be able to see if something like a plan to sign people up for welfare is happening or going to happen.
The real one.
Okay, in the interest of time, shall we move on to goal three?
So the one I wanted to delete was increased efforts to make library cards ubiquitous and easily obtained. I know it's been said over and over again that it's the parent's job, that they should monitor their children's selections. But then we want to make everyone have their own card so that that would actually make it harder for parental involvement in the checkout process. And I know that there was a a community meeting at H R E I where the panel that Amy wrote it was on had suggested that the only answer to books that kids wanted to get their hands on that parents were not approving of was to make sure and have those books at the library. So it just seems like this could be, you know, let's make sure all kids have their own library card so they can check out whatever they want to without their parents' express knowledge.
Do you want to address that, Amy? Yes, so it will always be a requirement for a library card to have parental permission, that will not go away. I think we can map back here at the community retreat, it was said multiple times that, you know, having an online signup that was easier to do, and even if minor did online library card signup, when they come to physically get the card, which is what you have to do eventually, is that you would need your parents' permission. So you'd need a signature, you'd need the parents' permission. And so that is not going away. Some of the suggestions though, at the retreat were just things like signup campaigns. I think that the idea here is that you know, this is a taxpayer funded service, so we want people to be aware and to be able to use this service. The more people that use it, you know, the more value that everyone's getting out of the public library. So here it was just kind of efforts to make online signup easier and then to do kind of library card campaigns. But it was not in any way to waive any sort of parental permission.
So 18 and under has to have a parental permission, it has to have a.
What age? Under 18.
Under, under 18. So when you're 18 or 18, then you don't, but under 18.
And it's also not true, as a parent I can speak to, it's also not true that if your child has their own library card, you have no idea what they're checking out. You do, your accounts are linked.
And then just to speak to the panel, that was another panelist that, that was making the comment of having books, you know, in the library, but that wasn't, that wasn't somebody affiliated with the library that would have anything to do with our requirement to require parental permission.
Anybody else, anything they want to say on this one?
Just that it still removes the parents from the checkout process, so their kids may have already been exposed to something horrifying by the time they notice it.
How does it remove the parents from the checkout process? Because they get their own card?
Yeah, because the parent wouldn't need to be there to check the book out and to monitor their child selections before the book is checked out.
So if the parent said, no, you can't have your own card, then a kid wouldn't be able to check out by the time. That grants, so, so that the parent or the parent can say, I will hold your card. I mean, there's a lot of control that parents have, so a kid doesn't take a book up. If a parent doesn't, I just want to make sure, if a parent doesn't want their children to have the power to check out their own books, there are many ways that a child can have a library card, but a parent, a parent can hold it and not give it to the child. A parent can, doesn't have to allow a child to, just because a child asks for a card here, a parent says, no, they're not, we're not giving them a card. So parents have total control over what through their choices, they have total control over what their child checks out. If they're concerned about what their child's checking out, they have, they can either come with them, not give them a card. There's a number of ways. So I'm not trying to argue about that. I'm just trying to reassure people that there are a number of ways that parents maintain control.
Yes, you're right. And it's good to have this discussion, so I appreciate your perspective. A lot of people have the vision in their minds that libraries are safe places and that librarians are good, kind people who just want what's best for their children and they trust the libraries and they, you know, might just think, oh yeah, it would be great for my, I want my kids to read, I want my kids to have a love affair with books and education. And I want them to have their own card without realizing the kind of total smut and pornography that their children could be exposed to at the library. And a lot of this stuff is on display to catch children's attention and they end up looking at those books and the parent has no idea.
Well, I think again, we do not have pornography in the kids section. And so I think we just, when we continue to say that, we're continuing to say inaccurate information. That again, is, is not helping us get to kind of the goal here, which is to look at our strategic plan and to talk about solutions. And so in this case, we're talking about how can we make it easy and accessible? And so in this case, we're talking about how can we make it easy and accessible for people to get library cards? And this isn't necessarily saying we want to bypass the parents. In fact, this is absolutely not saying that because that's a requirement that's staying. We're in the middle of redesigning our library card application right now, just because it's clunky. And we're just even highlighting even more that a parent, you know, needs it. I mean, our staff can't even issue a library card without that, but we're making it just super bold on that library card. So this is not an element that's going to go away, but I think just making it more prominent on our website or when we go out on our outreach events, that we're making it easy for somebody to come up to a staff member and sign up for a library card. And, and by easy, we just mean that, you know, for, for adults or childrens with their parents. This isn't like going out to, to children and, and bypassing that whole parental requirement. So I think that's bringing an issue here that isn't necessarily tied to just making it more accessible for somebody to have a library card.
I would disagree. There is pornography in the children's section and Mary Anna has read some of the stuff to our board that she talked about from.
That book is not in our children's section and you're showing it to people and it's not in our children's section.
I would.
Mary Anna, the audience, please not do that. That's, and I, we, okay, we're, okay. We're, there are whole books about fifteen year olds. Okay. Having sex and being prostitutes and graphic horrible descriptions of sex scenes in there. That is pornographic. That is pornography. Even if it's not like an actual picture, there are other books that have hand drawings of people having all kinds of different sex, different sex acts. That is pornography and it's in the children's section. Do you want to say something?
I, I think there, um, the only book that you could be referring to is a sex education book that's in our young adult section that right, that would be in the teen section, but that's sex education. So it talks about everything from puberty on to sex. I mean, this is the difficult part of our teen section. So when we say children, we're typically referring to twelve and under, and then we have our teen section. But our teen section, there's a challenge there because they're trying to serve everyone from twelve to eighteen. And what twelve and thirteen year olds are interested in is very different than seventeen and eighteen year olds. And so this is something that we need to, to look at. How we, this is how libraries have always kind of classified their books. But as these concerns are raised, I think we're having some internal dialogue about what happens. There are, since before Judy Blume, since the nineteen seventies, there has been some level of sex in, in teen YA books. And so what we need to see is as publishers and authors kind of try to push the limits, which YA books continue to do. You know, we're trying to be mindful of that and make sure that we have the, a correct age, you know, classification with those books. But when we say, but I think it's a label pornographic, it's not something that would be pornographic in, in legal sense.
And I would like us to stay focused on our plan. And I have, everybody has spoke, not everybody has spoken and we are trying to keep it in order. Does anybody else want to have some input on this particular one, which is to strike the bullet point, increase efforts to make library cards ubiquitous and easily obtained? Somebody else has any concerns? Okay. Can we move on in the interest of time to goal four? That would be striking the last bullet point. Did you want to say something about that, Rochelle?
Yes, I, I love values of literacy, but the intellectual freedom. I mean, on face value, that's a beautiful, wonderful thing, but I know that many in the library world consider that to be expose children to everything, that children have a right to be exposed to everything, including bestiality and prostitution. And that's horrible. I mean, what a bunch of sick adults want to shove this stuff on children. No, it doesn't, but that's how it will be used and it will be used as justification for, you know, saying that, well, intellectual freedom and open access is, is part of our goals and so, you know, therefore we'll use that to continue to promote this stuff to kids.
Okay. Anybody else want to address that? Right from the onset, libraries are all about the First Amendment, which encompasses intellectual freedom and open access. Those are the core library values. I don't, I don't understand how, are you suggesting we rewrite the missing libraries? This speaks directly to the First Amendment. That's what we do. Destroying children, that's. Rochelle, I would like us to just go around. I, I will make us go in order if we don't take time. This back and forth isn't what we do. One person speaks and, and the everybody speaks before the person speaks in a second time. That's Robert's rule of order. So Rochelle, thank you. Who would, anybody would like to say something next? Oh, well, you've been letting our director go first and so I was waiting for input from the director.
Um, just that this bullet point came from staff survey and from the community retreat and from stakeholder interviews. So just kind of, again, this was through that broad community and staff feedback.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Again, I see what, I see what you're saying, Rochelle. And I can look at this from two different sides and it's difficult because I definitely know what you're talking about. I don't know if removing this would do much overall. If it, if it was removed, I don't know. It would, it would do anything, but I'm really excited to work on the policy. And hoping that we can, whether we can or not, I don't know, but I'm hoping that we can even have two separate policies. One for children's books and one for the rest of the library. So that's what I'm focused on for this particular issue is the, the redoing of the policy.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm really struggling. Certainly literacy is a core value, open access. This is a public building. This is a public forum, limited public forum. It must be open to all. So I think those two right off the bat are just given. So then intellectual freedom is the ability to think for oneself, which you disagreed with one of the prior bullet points because you said it was trying to control information. This is the exact opposite, which is trying to promote freedom of information and you have a problem with that too. So I'd like to know which is which, Rochelle. Do you not, I mean, do you want the library to control the narrative or do you want people to have freedom to think how they want to think, which is in my view, exactly what intellectual freedom is? So you're speaking out of both sides of your mouth.
So hang on a sec. Rochelle, do you have anything to say?
No.
Okay. Amy? Anybody else want to speak on to this?
Yes, intellectual freedom for adults. Children should be protected. That's what responsible adults do.
Okay, moving on to goal five. You would like to strike the third bullet point? Would you like to talk about that?
Um, yeah, I'm just concerned about American public library values. That means like the American Library Association would like to expose children to, to basically destroy their innocence and promote Marxism. I'm not for that.
Amy, would you like to address that? They actually were pretty deliberate on the wording here because they weren't talking about the American Library Association. What they're talking about is what public libraries stand for in the United States, which has, and so that's what they were referring to here, you know, and, and public libraries. You know, we have core values, even, you know, the American Library Association has put out a variety of tools and resources, standards and best practices. But over time, through interpretation of, of the First Amendment, you know, many of these values that the public library holds has been directly tied to the Constitution. So this isn't something that just a single library, a single library system in Idaho would come up with. So this is what that's saying is how does the community library network help affirm, you know, our values and American public library values? But they were pretty deliberate to not include the American Library Association here.
Yeah. So, I mean, they were literally specific in that. I mean, did they say?
That's why they, this was in casual conversation with them. That they said what they heard through the community retreat, through the staff survey. And so were some of these, I mean, because this one kind of echoes a little bit of that prior bullet point, you know? So they were talking about core values and then they're like, you know, we know that right now there's been some controversy with the American Library Association. So we really are talking about what American public libraries.
Okay. And that, I mean, I appreciate them wording it that way, but I don't think that really separates it too much. And it is true. I have right here that was it Emily Rabinsky or Drivinsky? Drivinsky, her own words, we all know her. She wants to queer the catalog of libraries. And so that is extremely concerning. And so I, I see where public, uh, American public library values that usually be tied to that. And there's, I mean, she doesn't disguise her goal at all. And she doesn't say, uh, queer the adult section, you know? So that I, I can see where this could be an issue.
Do you want to?
Well, I'll just.
Now, there's, there's some nuances here that I think, well, the director can help us talk about, because.
Well, just a couple of things. So, so one, she won't be in office until summer of twenty twenty-three. So not, she's said some statements, but she's had no influence yet on anything, any changes or any initiatives at the American Library Association. And then the other thing is that when we talk about public library values, it's really talking about that, you know, kind of those same things, literacy, open access, everybody's welcome, everybody's represented. Some of those things that continue to be, that the libraries have stood for, for decades. And so some things that the American Library Association has put out are freedom to read statements, the Library of Bill of Rights, many of which were drafted forty and fifty years ago. Occasionally some changes are made to those. So even if next year's ALA president comes out with an initiative to queer the catalog, there's nothing ALA can dictate that any individual library can do. So it would be this board that would decide, are we going to make any changes based on anything that ALA has recently said? So in that case, we are not members as a library entity of the American Library Association. They really just provide resources, best practices. They do, they are a, an association, meaning that they can do lobbying and legislative work. But typically it's really about individuals in the library profession that join, not, I mean, they do have institutional membership, but this institution has not, not joined. And even if you're an institutional member, they're again not doing anything to push down. No, there's trainings and conferences, et cetera, but again, they've kind of, any profession has an association at the national level that is providing some of those guides, training and best practices, American Medical Association, American Bar Association. And so that's the role that ALA plays, but it, and, but even here, it's, it's less regulatory even than some of those other organizations. So, so any one president has very little effect on some of these broader tools and resources that libraries do use ALA for.
And I'm sorry, just to be more clear on this conversation. So I know she won't be in until twenty-three, but for somebody like that to make it up that high and, and be elected into it, it's, it's not just her, if that makes sense. And then if they have lobbying power, that's huge.
What does she mean by queer the catalog?
Um, I think that's about creating a variety of subject headings that might more, for some accurately describe a book that might be about someone who is gay. You know, so there's, there's subject headings that kind of, that are more representative.
And not, not just gay, because queer is across the board, anything.
Right. You know, but she is someone who's an academic librarian and has cataloguing expertise. And, and so that's kind of been, I'd say, in terms of lobbying power, that, that's as a whole, that isn't again, any one individual. In fact, they usually hire lobbyists. But things that they might lobby for would be things like funding for the Institute of Museum of Library of Sciences that then does grants to, to small and medium sized libraries. And so these are some of the things that they're lobbying for, or if there was all back when the Patriot Act was passed, you know, there was, many libraries were concerned about that effect. And so then there was lobbying on the behalf of the American Library Association. So those would be specific things that they might do. But again, any one president, I mean, what changes in ALA in a single year is very little.
Have you gotten a chance to speak yet, Judy? Because I haven't either on this. Okay. So sorry, if we were going in a row here. I, I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing, you know, the national level and I'm hearing here our community library network. To me, it's extremely important that this appear in our strategic plan because public libraries are under attack. I mean, the propaganda is there, there's a huge backlash currently against libraries. So I think for this library and this system, it is important that our story be told and for the information to be accurate. And a lot of the sensationalizing is simply not true. So I, I view it as two different things and I view it as trying to make sure that we are empowering staff to do exactly what this is saying. This is not saying we're going to turn this library into the ALA. In fact, this entire strategic plan is specifically targeted for this community and this library system. And this community needs to hear the library's narrative, which has gotten skewered and, you know, rampant misinformation and fake news.
Judy?
That sounded pretty good. The other thought was, what you said makes sense to me, was the issue of local control. It's our library board. It did have who's what we want to do and what we direct our staff to do. And we'll listen to the public here and blend it with larger ideas that we can think of, which is why we draw on different resources to understand the largest impact we have is to get the citizens access to accurate information.
My thought is that we absolutely, that absolutely needs to be in here. But my thought is if the single word American triggers people in a way that interferes with doing what this says, just let it read community library network and public library values. We're talking, this is a local document. It, it directly affects the local people that live around here. If American is, it doesn't bother me, but if it's a trigger for other people, just remove the word American. Um, I, I would like to say something. I don't think the entire library community is absolutely thrilled with the president that got, the president-elect. I was, I, I was a little taken aback by what she said. And to, to say the least, it doesn't help libraries at this point in time. But throwing out the American Library Association's for, for, you know, the read, read those things, throwing them out is like throwing out the Constitution because you don't like the president. The American Library Association has been around for over a hundred years and, and there's a re, there's a reason in that those, those core treatises, I guess you would say, were developed during the fifties, which was a supremely conservative time. And I think we need to remember that as we, as we look at this. And I have, I have it from somebody who's more nationally involved with libraries that everybody's real pleased with the new president. You know, yeah, it's, it's a challenge. It's really creating a challenging situation for libraries. But I do like, I would, I underline that American public library, and I thought, oh, isn't that, so I appreciate the fact that they are sensitive to the, that the strategic planning group was sensitive to the fact that this community finds ALA just, you know, very disturbing. was sensitive to the fact that this community finds ALA just, you know, very disturbing. So, um, anyway, I probably have to say, Rochelle, did you want to go again?
Yeah, it's completely ridiculous to say that people were triggered by the word American. I don't think anyone here was triggered by that. It was triggered by the ALA. The ALA is an evil Marxist institution promoting harm to children. And I'm wondering how many people would be sent to the ALA conferences here?
Um, it was the PLA conference, but it's not.
And the PLA is a subset of the ALA.
Um, yes.
Calling that, it, I mean, that's certainly an opinion.
I just want to do a reminder on time because we still have about fifty minutes at least.
Yeah.
Of other things.
All right. And then that's, so that's the last thing that we have. So at this point in time, um, we are going to vote on the amendments. Uh, if there's any more discussion, we're going to vote on the amendment, which was to strike all those bullet points. And so the amendment was, Rochelle amended, amended the motion to strike all of, did you get the list of, the list of, strike all of those bullet points from the strategic plan? That's the motion.
It doesn't include adding the other one as well, or is it a different?
It is. The motion, the, the, what we're voting on right now is the amendment. The second amendment, the first amendment already passed. The second amendment, we're voting on the second amendment. And her second amendment is to strike all of the bullet points from the goals that we just went over. Um, so that's it. We've had discussions. And so at this point in time, um, all those in favor of removing all of the bullet points um, that have been indicated from the strategic plan. I mean, uh, anybody, those in favor of removing the bullet points from the strategic plan as indicators? All right, those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that amendment has passed. So now we're back to the original amendment.
Can I get a roll call on the vote? I did not hear everybody's vote.
Okay, good. Rochelle was a nay and everybody else was a nay.
Office officer.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, you guys. I was not here. I appreciate all the help I can get. All right.
Um, so we're left with my motion on the table as amended by Rochelle.
Yes.
The first amendment.
Yes, and that is, and I will tell you what that is. If that is, all right, it has been moved to adopt the strategic plan as presented by library strategy with the amendment to include a fifth strategy to go forward, which is cultivate public trust by implementing consistent member friendly policies and procedures. Um, so that is the motion. And if there is more discussion, that would be fine, except for the fact that you know, right, we have a lot of stuff to do and we only have, and, yeah. So is there any more discussion on it? All right, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right. I would, um, like to thank you all for that. And what we're going to do right now is if we can take a quick, um, tour with and then we'll come back, we will probably have to extend afternoon. And just don't give me that. Right, so let's, so you either can take a break or take a tour, whatever you'd like.
Sure time.
But discussion is the next item on the agenda, you know, the action item is adoption of the twenty, the, the goal is the act, the adoption of the twenty twenty-three budget. All right, um, I would either entertain a motion or, um, move for discussion.
Whatever your brothers are. I move that we accept the zero percent growth only budget with an overall reduction of ninety-three thousand five hundred eighty in the following areas, reduce adult programs from twenty-three thousand down fifteen thousand, children's programs from forty-three thousand down thirty thousand, collections, physical and e-materials from four hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred, yes, four hundred thousand, and collection, uh, library things from five thousand down to zero. So, um, this out. You guys.
There's no two?
No, I just, I made enough.
All right, it's been moved to accept, uh, we need it's been moved to accept the zero percent growth only budget with an overall reduction of ninety-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars in the following areas, adult programs from twenty, well, adult programs from, um, twenty-three thousand, twenty-three K, down to fifteen K, children's programs from forty-three K to thirty K, collections, physical and e-materials from forty-six, seven, five, eighty, down to four hundred K, and collections of library things from, um, five thousand down to zero. Um, so we're now in discussion. Are those changes, changes that you made specifically Rochelle? Uh, or are they ones that you were just indicating would be the changes that would be made in going, going down to a zero percent budget? They're not one of the ones that we, it was, this is not, anyway, go ahead. Uh, they, they were changes, the zero percent budget and then additionally to reduce those particular areas. So you reduced the budget, the zero percent budget down another nine hundred, ninety-three thousand dollars, that in five hundred, ninety-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, is that what you're saying? Okay, okay, so it's a less than zero percent budget.
Is that, is that what you're saying? It's not taking zero percent with growth only, but then going under zero percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, is, is everybody got clarity on what the motion is?
I think so.
Okay. Um, all right, I, I would certainly entertain discussion on this. Would you like to start, Vanessa?
Uh, yeah, and I just want to make sure a hundred percent I'm clear on this because as everybody knows, I had a motion to, um, take zero percent growth only, estimated growth amount only. Uh, but that's not what this is. This is zero percent minus this, or is it zero percent? And you're taking this away from the ninety, you're taking ninety-six thousand off? So I guess I don't have clarity.
That's what I, my understanding was from the zero percent budget, she is also reducing that budget even more by ninety-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Yeah.
Okay.
So a less than zero percent budget.
Uh, I, I don't really have any questions. Um, again, as everybody knows, I was really, I mean, I would love a zero percent growth only. Um, I don't, but I should, uh, reducing it though. I, I'm not sure about how I feel about that.
Um, I apparently didn't bring my notes with me from our prior budget discussions this year, which there have been many. So that's unfortunate. I wish I could, um, reflect back on my notes. But if memory serves, staff presented us with several different options. The one with two percent included a litany of facilities upgrades and things that needed to occur that I think it would be extremely short sighted for us to not budget for. In addition to that, um, there were a couple of new positions created as well as, um, the compensation study allowing for raises for employees. I think no one on this board would disagree that retention of staff is a huge problem and trying to be competitive in the current market is a huge, huge problem for this library and this system. So, um, I, I could not in good conscience reverse course on the recommendations made by staff for the increases that have previously been discussed, um, in prior budget discussions.
Rochelle, did you want to speak to this?
Uh, yes, I wanted to go to the zero, the zero percentage. As according to the old definition of recessions, uh, uh, before it was just recently changed, uh, the longstanding definition is two quarters shrinking gross domestic product, which we are definitely about a five recession. Um, we are having double digit deflation, uh, even aiming to voice concerns that the economy may tank. Uh, for these reasons, I think now is not the time to ask for more money. Just give us that players a break and reduce taxes. Um, I think we should reduce the programming budget because programs are fun, but not the proper role of a government library. I've been to several onsite and offsite library programs where they barely, if at all, even mention the library or books. Um, it seems the point maybe just to use up taxpayer money without promoting the actual library or promoting books. Uh, I think that we should lower the physical and e-collections because the olde's, the goodies that taught, uh, their taught goodness are being removed to make room for materials like groomed children and sexual confusion, uh, being Marxists that hate America and pre-grooming children, um, uh, uh, anyway, the pre-grooming children, they're more likely to be victims of pedophiles. I think that we should drop the library things because it is a very cool concept. I really like the idea, but it's also not the proper role of government libraries and therefore not a proper use of taxpayer money. Um, the compensation study estimates are already included in salaries. So, um, they're already expecting to come up to, uh, whatever the compensation study might, um, might determine. Uh, facility fixes that are needed are already saved for, uh, so we don't need to increase taxes for that. Uh, and I just, I have great empathy for taxpayers, people are in hard times and, um, we should consider their monetary needs as well.
Thank you. Judy?
I'm still bringing my thoughts together, probably fundamental one is private libraries versus public libraries. This is a public library, a government that's not evil, provided by taxpayers here, a little bit of control. And I think the budget is irresponsible budgeting.
Okay, um, Rochelle, do you want to say something? Um, reducing money for adult programs, reducing money for children's program, all of these things with the exception, perhaps, if you singled out the library things. Those other three things are things that members or community members that helped with the study were interested in. And I, I have to say that I, in the many years that I've done this and the many, um, people that I have served with, I have never seen a trustee asked to spend less money on our bread and butter, which in this case is the physical and e-material collection.
And it's, um, and just a couple of things on our collections. Um, so that would be a fourteen percent decrease. Um, in the, um, community survey, um, the specific reasons that people come to the library was for our collection and for children's programming were the top two reason that people come. So I think that's pretty, um, that would be difficult to show to the public, particularly our interlibrary loan increase is continuing to, um, skyrocket. So people are both looking at our collection, we have heavy usage of our collection, but then we don't always have what they need. And so we're in our library loaning, into library loaning, which is expensive, both in staff time and in, um, in resources. And so we cut our collection fourteen percent. We're going to be doing even more rent and borrowing loan, and we're going to have to ask for more staff because interlibrary loan is super time extensive to meet the needs. Um, and it is our core, you know, library start with their collections. Um, we also haven't, um, I mean, our increases to our collections over time has been literally like maybe a thousand each year, maybe two thousand. So it's stayed at this four hundred and sixty, four hundred and sixty-five thousand for a number of years. So in terms of keeping up with demand and growth, um, that's certainly, um, you know, slashing that, I mean, cutting it that, that much, you know, is, um, that's a pretty big cut. And then for our children's programming, that's a thirty percent cut. Um, again, you know, we do a variety of different programming, but our children's programming at its core, the majority of that is storytime. So it is focused on early literacy. It's also STEM programming, educational. Yes, some of the summer programs are, um, you know, music and, and a variety of different things. But you know, if you come to a library, you know, in, during the school year, you know, what you're going to be seeing happening is storytimes and is, um, the STEM after school programming. And some of that is also providing kids, um, you know, um, where they're at the library, coming to a program versus perhaps being, you know, on a video game, you know, doing something else that, um, may not be quite as educational. So we really work hard to, um, to make sure that those programs, if not necessarily tied directly to our collection, but that are tied to more that educational discovery and lifelong learning. Um, so I, I would just highly recommend that we certainly do not reduce the budget in those core areas, which is kind of, again, all the core mission.
Yeah, um, in looking at this, reducing all of the, it looks like punitive action to the public. The library has been asked throughout the surveys, et cetera, to, um, serve the community more. And these are the exact areas where we serve the community that are being reduced. It would be, um, it, it, yeah, that's just, it, we, reducing what we do. All right, is there any more discussion or like anybody would like to say anything else?
Oh, just to follow up on Rochelle's comments about reducing taxes. As I have said in every single discussion we've had about the budget, um, because of the overwhelming growth that Idaho has experienced, we're not talking about the growth that's going to occur with new taxpayers moving in for the course of the year, just the growth that has happened over the last several years. Every, I am confident that taxes are going to decrease. So I am sensitive to increasing taxes on the taxpayer and I do not want to increase taxes on the taxpayer. But based on the research that I have done, everything that I have read, my understanding is, and I firmly believe this, but I would certainly be open to, uh, being shown that I'm wrong, that we are not increasing an individual taxpayer's, um, tax load.
Um, okay.
Uh, just I guess I'll say again that I definitely was for the zero percent, taking the growth only. But obviously that didn't pass, that didn't pass. I don't know why this would pass if taking zero didn't pass. But I, I think that reducing it is a little extreme. I'm all for taking zero though. Um, next year, I'll be saying the same thing.
I just think the, the conversation is important and by reducing those areas, I just figured maybe the library would focus on the most important things, um, rather than having extra money to, uh, put towards hiring.
I already said it, I think it's irresponsible. I do not support it.
Amy?
No.
Okay, um, then it has been moved to accept the zero percent growth only budget with an, with an, oh, with an additional reduction of ninety-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars in the following areas, adult programs, children's programs, collection, physical materials and collections, library things. Um, and the numbers she have, you have in front of you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so, um, we're back at, I'm going to entertain any other motions that anybody would like to make.
Oh, even though we don't know who made the motion last month for publication, so, um, I, yeah, since I, um, I move that we adopt the FY twenty-three budget at a two percent increase plus growth.
Okay, it's been moved to adopt the FY twenty-three, twenty-two-three budget at the two percent plus growth. All right.
Did I say it right?
Yes.
This session on this. You want to just go around table like we did? That worked. I'm sorry, I don't have anything to say.
We, we really beat it to death in the last few months, nothing else to say.
Okay, all right. Rochelle?
I just think now it's not the time to raise the budget, even if some think that it wouldn't raise individual taxes. Adding more to the budget, I don't think it gets that far.
Uh, Judy? You heard me last time, I'd like three percent, I'll vote my names and vote for two.
Okay. Michelle?
I, I also warn the three percent. I went to the post files budget hearing and they are taking the full three, full three percent. They went over a pretty detailed summary and they're making liberal use of that money. There is also in support of what Regina was trying to explain, the city manager explained that the levy rate did indeed go down quite significantly. Which means that even at three percent for the city, there will be no tax raising. There also was a spectacular lack of people, even in the audience level of speaking, nobody spoke, nobody complained. So that was the end of that, so I absolutely think that we need to do two percent.
Uh, Amy?
No, I mean, I think we, you know, we did present a variety of scenarios and, and then the two percent will allow us to, to do some of the outstanding facility projects as well as be able to kind of fulfill some of the promise that comes with doing a compensation plan as well as kind of keep some of our services at, you know, at an optimal level, so.
Okay. We beat it to death. All right, is anybody else, have you, go around again? All right, it's been moved to accept the FY twenty-two-three budget at two percent plus growth. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed?
No.
And I will vote I. Get this? Okay. All righty, moving forward to I am going to contact him, I'm going on vacation next week. But I do want to talk to him. We have some, and see what he has, I'll bring that to you next month. To tell you what, tell you what he, what he can present to us. All right, facilities update? No, no facilities update?
I'm sure there'll be something at some point.
Let's leave updates?
Just to remind, just to remind that the election in November is pretty important, it's November eighth. In between, I'll bring some other ideas to you that I don't think are today.
Okay, community announcement, Judy have anything? All right, a future of agenda request, we will be having a material selection policy review starting in September. That is, we put it on there to, you know, that was a request. Please have the board sample evaluation and we haven't quite figured out.
That's fine.
That might, well, interesting.
Almost could we do it with, you can do it in education.
Yeah. Yeah. And so we're sort of leaving that one hanging out there until we, would there be, what would this look like? You know, what would it, what do, is there, is there somebody that can come do, help us or whatever? And rather than just throwing us in a room and trying to, I mean, it'll you know, doesn't, you know.
Be constructed with our time.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, if we need something constructive to offer and see if you guys like. Anybody that ideas are, are welcome.
Awesome, I, I would like to suggest that we could start the material selection policy review in September, but since it's going to be in printers and that's like an hour for a lot of people that that it wouldn't be right to have us, it, it wouldn't be right to have it be an action item at that time and we, that should wait until we get back to where more people could comment on it if they wanted to.
Do, do you remember the programming policy?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Just, just saying.
Well, the whole process is one of information first before you ever get to an action. So it should never be in the same meeting anyway.
If we, if, we cannot take, make a motion on anything unless we have the word action item after it. We don't have to if there is the word action item, the words action item after it. But sometimes we put it on there as absolutely a just in case on some things, I think we did that earlier. Okay, so.
And also the, the cost of paper and ink.
Oh yeah, didn't wait, yes.
Yes, and we, we did do some research and I let me see if I have it. So what we've been able to find out so far, and so then maybe with this information, the board can decide what to do with that is right now in terms of toner and paper and tax cost. The cost to the library for black and white prints for eight and a half by eleven is five cents and we do charge ten cents?
Per side.
We'll recharge per side. And so if it's, if it's a single sided, you know, something just like this, this would be ten cents. If it was both sides, that would be twenty cents.
But it costs us five cents?
Well, that is just, I mean, so what we've been able to do so far is like the actual materials cost, which is the toner and paper, and then we do have to charge sales tax. So the toner's three cents, the paper's one cent. And the tax is one cent. But what, I mean, that five cents kind of, the idea is that that covers some of the wear and tear on the machine because eventually we have to replace copiers, you know, and and pop, public copy, copiers and public printers. So at least what's kind of that preliminary, and then color was a bit more for the toner. But only a couple of cents more. That does have more wear and tear usually, you know, color copies do. So at least as our preliminary research, it kind of looks like we are charging, you know, enough to offset our costs. But the board can decide, I mean, if they want this to be, so I think the original decision to charge ten cents was that we're just kind of breaking even, so to speak, you know, or but if we wanted to use it as a revenue, this again, would need to investigate what that looks like and then hold a hearing for fee increases.
How much is the, a color?
So the color copy is so we charge twenty-five cents. And then it's about toner wise is four cents, but that was harder, that's more based on, this is like the manufacturer says toner can do so many copies. But sometimes with color toner, you're replacing it sooner than that, so that's when we don't have, I mean, we have the manufacturers recommended, but it's really hard for us to say usage wise, we did two thousand prints in between toner replacement. So this was based on using manufacturer recommended life, if that makes any sense. So if they said it would last two thousand, then that's where we got the cost was four cents per page. Plus one cent for paper, because the paper cost doesn't change versus color and then tax. So really that one's about six cents and we charge twenty-five, but again, color there, there's a little more wear and tear on both the machines and probably we are replacing toner more often than even their manufacturer recommends.
I appreciate all the work that went into that.
And this is Janelle, so thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm really shocked.
So I don't know if we're going around and saying whether or not you still want to have it as an agenda item, I just want to caution us from viewing copies as a revenue stream because under federal law, there are several things that are tied to the cost the local library charges for copies, believe it or not. Because libraries are a trusted source to know what is the somewhat true cost to a taxpayer of you know, a black and white copy or a color copy and what, and what have you.
Well, maybe we shouldn't let these numbers out. Is that, is that? Is that, I mean, and the thing is the wear and tear, the equipments replaced how often approximately? Like not every year?
No, no, and printers probably more often than copiers, copiers do have a pretty long lifespan. In fact, we just met with a copier vendor who was very persistent a few days ago and five years is about what a copy, you know, but those are the big so this is both, and we charge both for copies that come out of a copier. And in some cases, that's the same as the public printer and some situations we have a smaller, you know, desktop printer.
Wow. When I said shocked, I'm shocked that that the price curves, is that look, that's what I meant by shocked.
Good news.
I thought for sure that, you know, it would be above the twenty-five cents.
Oh, what we were.
Because of ink, but I suppose when you buy big huge containers of ink for you know, that size of a machine, it makes a difference.
So I can probably fudge us for a minute more, so I'm gonna, or we have to make a motion to extend the meeting. So do you want this as an agenda item?
I don't know, does anybody else feel like it should be? Because this sounds.
Sounds like they, if it were.
It feels, yeah, no, I don't want it, Janelle, because this, this answers the question.
Okay. And we can always do that too, give information on, on.
Right, again, thank you, Janelle and everyone that worked on that.
Okay, so I think we have our meeting set, you, as, because you guys did a good job, thank you so much.
Yeah, I was just going to say the agenda was printed before the meeting date is changed or were confirmed. So the September date is actually, remember, thirteenth, twelve to three, October eighteenth, two to five. So sorry that your agenda has the old dates.
Okay, so the thirteen is printer.
Yes.
I could have hopefully one quick question. On the back page of the library report reports, talks about social emotional development.
Okay, I, I'm concerned, can we, can you ask anything about this about afterwards, I'm concerned that yeah.
Would you entertain a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, I shall move.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Rochelle, as, it's, okay, it's been moved through adjournment, I'll go for the favor. All right, that would be a great question that you can ask. I'm sorry that it didn't get brought up. That would be a good one for consent.
Okay, yeah, I thought it was normally listed in there. Is that library board reports, that's part of?
Yeah, the consent agenda, I thought it was usually under library, under the consent agenda, and why it isn't, I don't know.
It is. Community library. I will find out a little bit more, the lunch and learning is an initiative you service, this has been working on where they work to provide resources to caregivers on early infancy. And so they have several program components in regards to that, and you write social emotional development is there. I mean, I think that's a little bit about, you know, it might be, some of the storytime topics might be about you know, as I've written a book about being angry or happy, right, and how to label your actions and things of that nature. And so that may be a component there, but I will get more information.
Yeah, I just, it just social emotional learning, which is like CRT.
Hey, everybody for liberty. Thank you, I appreciate it, I was really close.